It's 5:30, I'll call our City Council meeting into order. We do have a forum, and I've asked Councilman Gerald Cook to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, and one indivisible.
Thank you, sir. It's a great day to be living in Stevieville, Texas. What we have tonight with is Kirk Paxill, and he's going to lead us in our invocations. Once again, thank you so much for always providing somebody for that.
You're welcome. It's so good to be here, and I just want to say on behalf of the Ministers Alliance that we just appreciate you. We have all of our, some of our public servants in here, and you as City Council and City Staff, we just thank you for what you do for our city. So, let's go before the Lord. Lord Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you that we live in a great place, and a great state, and a great country. And the adjective "great" is there because you are the leader of our great state, country, and city. And we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be a part of such a great place. Please help us tonight, Lord, as these decisions that need to be made, let us make the right decisions. There is a right decision, Lord, and you know what it is, and so we ask you for guidance and direction. And we ask God a special blessing upon each person here. Thank you for the City Council who spend hours and hours and hours, the committees that do all the behind-the-scenes work, and the City Staff that puts in so many hours to help get the information out and to keep the citizens informed and just to keep the city going in the right direction. Thank you, Lord, so much for these people that work so hard. I pray that you would bless them in a very special way. Let them financially be blessed, but also let them just be blessed in their spirit, deep down. Let them know they're doing a good work for a good reason and a good cause. And I pray the citizens of this city would be thankful for the people that are in charge. Lord, we love you, and we thank you for this time, and we thank you for the police officers and law enforcement that are here tonight. And we just ask God that everything that's said and done would give you glory and honor, and in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership, Kirk. Dan, let's reverse that order we talked about. So, if you'll go first. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, it is my honor tonight to ask everyone to join us as we present the Stevieville Police Department Life Saving Award to one of our employees. I would like to read a short, brief synopsis of the event that has earned her this award. On September 28th, 2021, Stevieville Police Department Animal Services Officer Casey Randolph was in her own personal vehicle and off-duty when she drove upon the scene of a fatal vehicle accident in E wrath County. Animal Services Officer Randolph checked on the occupants of one of the involved vehicles and determined that two of the occupants were deceased. A third occupant she discovered was a small child who was critically injured and was having a restricted airway and not breathing. She stabilized the child's airway and maintained that airway open until E wrath County paramedics were able to arrive on scene and take over the care of this young child. Animal Services Officer Randolph communicated at the same time with our 911 dispatch center, via cellular telephone, and to coordinate those arriving paramedics and what they would encounter. Based on the paramedic's expertise and training, they have confirmed that her actions on scene saved the life of that young child that day. And so, would she would not, or that child would not have survived the injuries sustained during that crash. So, Mr. Mayor, if you will join us up front, we would like to present the SPD Life Saving Award to Animal Services Officer Casey Randolph.
I have a proclamation also, and we did it two years ago. James, I don't see you. Jim here? There he is in the back, okay. Why don't y'all come up here and welcome. I'll read the proclamation. This is called "Tuba Christmas." Whereas tuba Christmas concerts, as conceived in 1974 by renowned tubist Harvey G. Phillips, have become an annual holiday tradition in cities throughout the world. And whereas tuba Christmas brings tuba, together tuba and ephoner? Players of all ages to present public concerts and traditional Christmas carols. Tuba Christmas concerts are presented free for the enjoyment of the public audience. And tuba Christmas coordinator James Woodward and brought this unique holiday event conducted by former Seagull I C Band Director Jim Perry and Jim Alexander and Wendell Gideon for Fair City. Now therefore, our DUC State Mayor, City of Stevieville, is hereby proclaiming Sunday, November 28th, 2021, as tuba Christmas Day. I used to play tuba in high school. Wasn't very good. Stacy, do we have anybody that would like to speak in the general discussion? Anybody would like to come up that hasn't signed up?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to our agenda. Planning and zoning commission, do we have Steve Killian on the line? I thought about banning him tonight because he's not here, and making Mr. Huckabee present all this material, but you know...
Thank you, sir.
He kind of threw up me is what he did.
He cut you some slack, didn't he?
There you go. Mr. Killian.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the latitude. Let me present Zoom out of town, trying to learn some things about planning and zoning, so I appreciate the flexibility here. The first case would be RZ 2021-015 and RP 2021-007. We're asking for the consideration of simultaneous consideration of a replat and a rezon. Of course, the rezon will be acted on first. This is for applicant Ontida LLC and Toby O'Neil requesting a rezon of properties located at 1083 Frye, which is parcel 326, 32260 of High Edition, High Second Edition, and Block 5, Block 1, which is 1065 West Frye, parcel 32261 of High Second Edition, Block 5, Block 2, of the City of Stevieville, E wrath County, Texas, from R1 single-family to R2.5 integrated housing. This property is currently zoned single-family with future land use also single-family. You may recall in May, we met with Mr. Burdick and Mr. Toby O'Neil regarding a request for a R3 rezon. That was denied, but led to the discussion with the Development Services Committee and the creation of a R2.5 zoning, which allows for a much lesser density of townhome units in comparison to multifamily properties. So, with this R2.5 zoning, the townhome development would be limited to 14 units compared to 24 units, which would have been permitted under a typical R3 zoning. Mr. Burdick and Mr. O'Neil are now requesting the consideration of the R2.5 zoning, and they have provided a copy of a replat to illustrate what the block looked like once the replat is completed, if approved. This project is for an intended townhome project, which is under consideration right now by a purchaser. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on October 20th, 2021, by a vote of 61, recommended the City Council approve the rezoning and replating requests. Mayor, if we scroll down to page 11, you'll see that we have the flats included, which show the current zone, or I'm sorry, the current plating. And then also on page 12 would be the proposed plating. And basically, 1083 and 1065 Frye will be replating part of their properties to allow for a third lot in this particular block. And the third lot will be where the townhome development will take place. So, 1083 and 1065 will become slightly smaller. The remainder lot will be there for the development. With that, Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? I want to say Dale, thank you for working with the city on the difficulty we had to make that happen. I want to recognize Councilman Brandon Huckabee for redoing this, getting the city where we need to be on this project. I appreciate that, Brandon. Any questions? Here now, we'll go into a public hearing on case number RZ. Now, we're going to do both of these together, right, Steve?
Mayor, I believe we need to act on the rezoning first and then the replat as well.
So, it needs to be in the order that's in it. Okay, so we're looking at case number RZ 2021-015. Well, for a public hearing, can we do both of those, Randy, same time? Then we'll have a public hearing, then on RP 2021-007. Does anyone want to speak in favor of the project? Please state your name and address, and also whether you're for or against the project.
My name's Dale Burdick. I live at 702 Prairie Wind. And really, I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Sabine for coming up with the idea of a new zone that fits the project, and the City Council, everybody that did all the work to create the new zone and do it so quickly, in such a timely manner, and so well. And a special thank you to Mr. Killian for all of his professionalism and hard work on putting it all together.
Questions for Dale?
Dale, one of the things that we've been asked over and over, do you know what the future plans for the old Chandler House are?
I do. The property is under contract, if everything goes well tonight. And I really like this buyer. She is, she's done many developments all over the state. She is from Hillsboro, but she plans to make a new home in Stevieville. And the reason she chose that property to do development on is she is absolutely in love with that mansion, and she wants to restore it and live in it.
Super. Good. That'd be a popular thing. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it, Dale. If anybody wants to speak in opposition to the project? Here now, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to, they're here, a motion on RZ 2021-015. Is that the right one, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move that we approve it, as written.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Now, we'll go to RP 2021-007. I heard a motion.
Moved.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Steve, and thanks a bunch. Okay, next item, number four.
Yes, sir. RZ 2021-016 is applicant Bosco Park LLC requesting a rezon of property located at 12 Clark Lane, parcel 63366 of City Edition, Block 85, Block 1 and 2A of the City of Stevieville, E wrath County, Texas, requesting a change of zoning from R3 multifamily to R2.5 integrated housing. Mr. Knute, on behalf of Bosco Park LLC, is requesting a R2.5 integrated housing to construct single-family townhomes to be sold as individual units. Again, as previously mentioned, the R2.5 zoning allows for a much lesser density of townhomes in this zoning as compared to R3, which will be 23 and 24 units per acre. This particular parcel is currently zoned R3 with the featured land use also being R3. Mr. Knute has provided in his seminal site plan, the renderings. The site plan does call for a slightly smaller lot dimension. And Mayor, I'd like to point out that in the R2.5 zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council are authorized to make those deviations on the requirements through a review of the site plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on October 20th, 2021, and by unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the City Council approve the rezoning request. Mayor, if you'd like to scroll down to page 27 in your packet, through page 30, you'll see the renderings of the property. Page 31 is the site plan, 32 showing the floor plan, 33, and 34. With that, Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve? Thank you, sir. Here, no questions. Then we'll proceed to a public hearing on R, case number RZ 2021-016. Would anybody come speak in favor of the project? State your name and address, are you for or against?
Taylor Knute, 373 North Floral Street, for the project. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, we're just really excited to bring another project in front of, in front of everyone here. Steve did a great job of kind of recapping everything that's going to be involved in this project. We think it's a great addition to the, it's near proximity to downtown, just a few blocks right across the river from the downtown square, and our intention is to keep doing infill projects like this and put as many new rooftops for sale for owner-occupied housing units in the downtown area to really try to, I know downtown redevelopment is big, a big emphasis with the council in the last year or two, and we're just trying to do everything we can to keep pushing that forward, so.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Want to speak in opposition? Here now, we'll close the public-
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I forgot to mention you did have one letter of opposition.
Okay.
I left that out of my presentation.
Okay, did you, did you need to address that?
The person that submitted the letter simply stated that he wished, or preferred that it remain R3 zoning.
Okay. Any further questions about that, council? Malcolm, I appreciate you and your family and what you've done in Seagull, Texas. Thank you, sir. Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing then and proceed. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve RZ 2021, as proposed.
Second. Have a motion, a second, further discussion. Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item, Steve.
Yes, sir. Case number RZ 2021-017, applicant Alan Vandergriff, Chad Vandergriff in Orianna, Atlanta, are requesting a rezon of property located at 683 West Carlton, parcel 29685 of Park Place and City Edition, Lot 3 and 69. P and lots 1B, 2B, 4B, and parcel 12 of City of Stevieville, E wrath County, Texas. B2 retail and commercial business to R3. This land is requesting a zoning change as they no longer wish to operate the business and desire the structure as originally constructed as a single-family residence. However, looking at the current zoning, they opted to request a R3 zoning. However, Mayor and Council, the future land use designated this property to be single-family. On October 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission convened. A vote of four to three recommended the City Council deny the rezoning request. With that, Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve? Thank you, sir. Going to a public hearing on public, on case number RZ 2021-017. Would anyone like to come speak in favor of the project? Would anybody like to speak in opposition to the project? State your name, your address, and for or against.
My name is Tom Hines. I live at 729 West Carlton Street, three houses from this property. I want to speak against it, but I also want to enlist some help from council. The pictures you see are the property, the former classic class. This initially was a residence. It was a hair salon that, after the parties died, the owner died, and the business closed. At P and Z, it was recommended for a R1, and there's a reason for that. It's because on the second picture, you see the triplexes that are there. And my concern is twofold, that on an R3, it could be a single-family detached, but the residents cannot be related to be up to three. So then, whatever happens to this piece of property, either it goes triplexes, duplexes, or a single-family, it could be leased out to tenants. What I'd like to point out is the second page, as you see, that truck is parked across, on the north side of Tarleton is no parking. And since we lived there in April, I did have an officer come after one week we were there explaining to us that we don't need to be parking on the north side of the street. We complied. There is a problem with the students and the tenants in that on the north side of the street, we can have a lot of traffic and people parking, including those in the first page, the first picture, the second page is just park in the middle of the street and abandon their vehicles. As you see on the second page, how many cars are parked on the right-hand side of the street, which makes it difficult for fire trucks to get up and down, although they can. And even to the point that they'll park on the right side of the street in front of my mailbox where I can't get mail. All right. I would oppose the R3 because we can't really know how many more tenants will be there in that. I would, I would support R1, but also would like some help with enforcement from council on this street. I know that PD has been there. I've witnessed the discussion with PD and one of the students in a house there. And that was in shortly, in September, shortly after classes started, and it hasn't changed. And I realize that, you know, there's a lot going on, so I can't really complain a lot. But if council chooses to grant the applicant, we would like some enforcement help. Because when we, when they park across the, if you look at the second page, when they do park across the street from our driveway on the, on the south side, which they can, that makes it difficult to get in and out because the street is narrow. When they park on both sides, it makes it difficult because we have to be very careful that we don't back up and hit somebody because it's difficult to get in and out with traffic on both sides. So, at the pleasure of the council, we would like some help.
As far as the police, Dan, would you?
Yes, sir.
Go with him and also get some enforcement here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Here now, we'll close the public hearing, and do I hear a motion on case number RZ 2021-017?
I make a motion to approve the rezoning of RZ 2021-R-017.
Have a motion, I hear a second.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
See, the question being is, so why was it not, do we know why it was not presented as a single-family request then, based upon the future land use? Steve?
I'm sorry, sir. I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, I mean, if the future land use calls for the single-family, why, do you know why it was not presented, the request for a single-family rezon then?
Well, when we spoke with them regarding the application, we were talking about the, the current zoning and the future land use, and that led to her request for the R3 zone. So, R3 zoning, as Mr. Barnes mentioned, does allow for single-family use in the R3 zoning, and she was wanting the highest possible use. Also, consequently, from my understanding, that they own an adjacent property and they would maybe consider that for replanning in the future.
Okay, so there's more to the request, we think, than just wanting to rezone the property for a single-family use at this time?
There's, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Any further discussion? Have a motion, second on floral, proceed to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out and talking. Next item, Steve, Republic, number eight.
Yes, sir. This is case number PD 2021-002, applicant Reese Flanigan of P and M LLC, and I believe that's recently changed, is representing Troy Campbell of Cowtown Properties, is requesting a rezon of a property at 525 Collins, which is Parcel 33237, on the Shepherd and Collins, Lot 6, Lots 1 and 2, in the City of Stevenville, Erap County, Texas, from, to plan development. That applicant presented a conceptual plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an intended townhome development on August 15th, 2021. Concept plan proposes 43 units on 2.62 acres, which is a density of 16.41 units per acre. He has 86 parking spaces for the units specifically, and then 37 guest spaces. The applicant is now requesting approval of the planned development. Sections 8E and 8J are outlined in the order for the approval of the PD. Planning and zoning reviewed the PD on October 20th, 2021, and by unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the City Council approve the rezoning request. Mayor, in the packet on page 51, we have renderings of the townhomes. We have floor plans on page 52, 53, 54. Additional renderings on page 55. Note, please note, Mayor and Council, that there is a 38-foot height, which is generally limited to a 35-foot height restriction, so that too would be something that we would have to make concession on for the PD. Another rendering on page 57. Page 58 illustrates the site plan, including landscape, egress and ingress. Page 59 is another rendering. And then, Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. And I believe the developer is present tonight. If the council has questions, visit, report the developer.
I have one question. On the fire department chief, have you seen this plan? My only concern is getting a, a fire truck, is the height, the height limit, or the, above the regular height, and that's one of the reasons we bought that ladder truck, so can that get in and out of there?
So, Mayor addressed this, all of the plans for the development come through the Fire Marshal's office and is reviewed for access. Whether or not the ladder truck can get through there, I'm not completely sure, but it meets the standards that we set forth.
All right, that's what I know. My only question was, we bought that ladder, the extra long, long one because the height restrictions, and they only get to fires, so I just asked a question. Thanks, sir. Anybody, any questions for Steve?
Other than the height require, exceeding the height requirement, are there any other obvious exceptions they're requesting as it relates to our normal zoning or plating requirements?
Yes, sir. With, great question. With the, with this PD, they're asking for slightly smaller lot dimensions. The typical requirement for a townhome is 30 by 100, and they are, I believe, at 22 feet per lot.
Anybody else? Okay, we enter a public hearing on case number PD 2021-002. Would anybody like to come and speak in favor of the project? Just state your name and address, and if you're for or against the project, I assume, we assume you are, but.
Sure. Reese Flanigan, sibling engineer, address is 2450 North Garrett Avenue, Dallas, Texas. Just to speak in favor of it, answer any questions you all may have. To add to Steve's introduction, there are garages on each of these units for all the tenants, and, and this did go by the Fire Marshal's desk prior, we, we had a pre-meeting already, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I think my only concern moving forward, so I know each one has a two-car garage, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But they're three-bedroom units, and we have 37 additional parking spaces, so it leaves us at a deficit for parking if we were to occupy every room?
I believe they are three-bedroom. Troy Campbell's here, I, with me, he's the developer. They might only be two bedrooms for the study.
There's a mix of both.
There's a mix of both, so they're not all three.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone want to speak in opposition to the project? Here now we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve PD 2021-002.
Second. Have a motion, was that you, Gerald?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Steve, next item.
Yes, sir. We're asking for a review of Chapter 154 related to the sign restrictions placed on murals. You may recall, on August 31st, 2021, Development Services Committee reviewed the sign regulations, and by unanimous vote, agreed that the 10% limitation relating to words and symbols from mural signs be removed, and that the all-cremise content be limited to 15% of the total sign area. This went to Planning and Zoning for public hearings on October 20th, 2021, and the Commission, by unanimous vote, recommended the City Council approve the recommended provisions. With that, Mayor, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Again, Brandon, I appreciate your work on this as well, leadership today there. No questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Can't wait to see.
Any else, Steve? Steve, anything else?
Aye. Sir, I have a committee report.
Okay.
And that would be it. This is a discussion of subdivision requirements in the ETJ, the Ex-ter, Ex-ter territorial jurisdiction. On October 19th, the Development Services Committee, by a vote of three, three to one, recommended that the City Council revise the subdivision ordinance for filling the provision that makes Chapter 155 applicable to properties in the city's ETJ. And Mayor, with that, we simply flagged it, we, into discussion or the review for the City Council.
Anybody want, any discussion? So you're asking for a motion to state the motion you'd like for Steve? Steve?
Mayor, I believe we're, we're suggesting the potential, I, to repeal 155, Section 155.1.09, paragraphs A and B.
Okay, just want to make sure, because basically, committee meeting we had.
Yeah, and I will make that motion.
You have a motion, Brandon?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, opposed?
No.
Okay, let's go do a roll call. Place one.
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
Five?
Aye.
Six?
No.
Seven?
Aye.
Eight?
Aye.
Well, that's odd, because it sure sounded like it was more than one no. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
We just have one allowed, though. Okay, that's what it was. All right, I got you. Thank you, sir. Next item, Tourism Visitor Bureau Committee, Ms. Garfield.
The committee met, and we discussed the rental leasing of the Christmas photopods that will be around the downtown area, and we decided to move forward with that. Those have been ordered, and there was no action by the council needed.
Thank you, ma'am. It'll look downtown really nice. Appreciate that. Appreciate that leadership.
Thank you.
Christmas. Yeah, there you go.
Development Services, Mr. Huckabee.
We, we met on October 19th, we just did it. We met on 19th, talked about the subdivision ordinance into the ETJ, discussion about with annexation and the roles that have changed there to kind of give more clarity to the county and the city's relationship, they kind of answered that, so we have that already, and that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Richard Cook?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The nominations committee met today, and would like to recommend to the council the allocation of $10,000 to be used to dress up the downtown area, particularly around the square, with USA flags, poles, Tarleton flags and poles, the necessary hardware, Stevenville High School flags with poles. The total flag cost estimated to be, in the neighborhood of $2,155. The, in addition to that, they have recommended to the council that a four sets of 12 banners for the lampposts in the downtown, around the square, around the courthouse, designs included, be purchased, and those would be seasonal, would be, the designs would be, according to the seasons, Christmas is coming up, and, and so they, there is some urgency there. This would also include banner poles and brackets, banner pole brackets, and as again, the total amounts requested for allocation by the council would be $10,000 maximum. That came as a committee recommendation to the council, and if there are any questions or anything like that, it, this recommendation came from the Main Street Board to the nominations committee, and the nominations committee approved this and is recommended to the council.
You making such a motion?
I do make it a motion, sir.
You're a second.
I second.
Have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Does that cost include the installation, seasonal installation and change-out, or is that something the city staff can do?
We expect that the city staff can do that, and Mr. Barnes has indicated that to us, too.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Proceed to vote, I have a motion, a second. All proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And that is, with one more exception, they, they also, the Main Street Board has requested that, they'd like for the council to think about issuing a recommendation to Tarleton, that the Tarleton Homecoming Parade a year from now be also included in the downtown area, the downtown area be included in the parade.
I've requested that already. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Thurman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personnel committee met October 26th, just to discuss the preliminary results of the salary survey that is completed. The preliminary was just a rough draft, and just meant to be a starting, jumping off point from where we go from here with our salary, our, our pay plan in the future. There's no action taken, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thunson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met and considered one item to be presented with council for approval, and that is a memorandum of understanding with STEYSD regarding our school resource officers. It's a program we've been involved with, the school should for quite some time. It's a cost-sharing program. It's a program where we both, I think, have a benefit to gain. There were some details that we needed to kind of, to request the school to try to work out a little better. I think it's beneficial to both parties still that are involved. This agreement would carry us through until August 7th of 2022. And so at this time, I'd make a motion that we approve, and MOU as presented.
A second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hasky?
Finance committee met on October the 19th. Fire Chief Robert Isbell recommended the purchase of a pre-owned ambulance to bolster the reserve ambulance fleet. Due to unforeseen incidents, the current fleet is below the numbers to maintain a frontline unit service. I think we're down to two right now, and the, and there is one unit that's completely offline and not expected to, to make it.
The ambulance?
That's right. That's right. Pun intended. City and's Martin Apparatus loaned the fire department a 2010 pre-owned ambulance. The ambulance is available for purchase for $20,000. The box on the ambulance is worth more than $20,000. The loan agreement expires on October the 29th. Part of the discussion included the, the flexibility for the possibility that the box be reused if, if we needed to set it on a different axle, so just gives us some flexibility. Chief, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Thank you, Carter.
Okay. All right. The finance committee unanimously voted to make a positive recommendation, recommendation to council to purchase it, and I will make that in the form of a motion right now.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Further discussion, questions? Here we are, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. At the end of yours?
That is the end of the finance. Ms. Harris? In case everybody hadn't heard this before, I really like her, she's really good. Calm down. Calm.
Mayor, council, this is the budget review for September 30th, 2021, which is the end of last fiscal year. Most of the indicators were as or better than, than we had anticipated. We received $7,000 in our property tax in the month of September, which resulted in $143,000 or 2.19% increase over the funds collected through last September. The 6.65 million collected fiscal year-to-date was 99.94% of budget, which was about $4,000 less than what we had anticipated, so almost there, but just a little shot. With our sales tax, we received $593,000 in September, which is 1.2 million or 19.29% more than the funds collected through last September. The seven and a half million that we collected fiscal year-to-date was 22.64% or $1,288,266 more than we budgeted. The target budget for operating revenue is 29.3 million. We received the 29.3 million. We were $1,254 under our target budget, which was due to the property taxes. The target budget for our expenditures, operating expenditures, is 21.9 million. We expended 20.2 million fiscal year-to-date, which resulted in a 1.7 million under our target budget. The operating revenue received last year was 27.9 million, which compared to the 29.3 million was $1.4 million increase. That was due to our property taxes, sales taxes, and our service charges. The operating expenditures last year were 19.4 million, compared to the current year's 20.2 million, which was a $770,000 increase. That was due to costs associated with the COVID-19 prevention, damage claims, wages, some supplies, special events, tournament expenses, credit card fees, maintenance, advertising for Mula Fest, and advertising Mula Fest and our gateway planning. For our investments, the total market value of our cash and investments on September 30th, 21, was $45,313, and $45,313,838. It's allocated 1% in demand accounts, 38% in TechStar investment pool, and 61% in our TechSpool investment pool. We earned $2,111.05 in interest for the quarter. The average yield to maturity for all our account tops for the quarter was .03%. was .02%. And the average yield to maturity for a three-month treasury bill for the quarter was .05%. Interest still stays. Are there any questions?
Questions for Monica.
Good job, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes. It's audit season, right?
Okay, Mr. Up next, Mr. Sanford. I took a straw poll beforehand. We, you have two minutes.
No.
Mr. Sanford, economic development.
Take a deep, take a deep breath.
90 seconds.
90, 90 seconds. There you go.
No, I can't say my name.
You've already, you've already wasted 30 seconds.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use up whoever's next of their time a little bit. No, a couple of good things. First of all, you know, I normally make some kind of funny little thing to start, or not funny, but some kind of anecdote to start the thing, and wasn't going to this time, but decided I was going to after all because of what just occurred about an hour ago. In 1898, on this day, cheerleading was first created at the University of Minnesota when somebody was cheering on the football team for the first time ever. So that was kind of good. And also on this day in 1983, Michael Jackson's Thriller was released worldwide for the first time, or worldwide. The reason those are somewhat germane to my comments, Thriller and cheerleading, is because we just found out that CETA had just been recognized for outstanding achievement in community economic development and for the entire state of Texas. So our organization is, I guess, doing something right. I don't know what, but we're doing something right. I'm pretty excited about that. We had been nominated for a couple of awards at the Economic Development, TEDC Economic Development Council Annual Meeting. We were ineligible for those awards because it turns out Ashley sits on the committee for that, and so she removed herself, but we also removed our nominations. What we didn't know is whenever, if you recall, Mayor, when I was down there, we had a meeting with Mr. Barnes and yourself and me, and it was a Zoom call or for, and some other, for an economic development project. While we were in this call, they were calling our name for outstanding achievement for economic development. So that was kind of cool. Anyway, so I thought that would share that with you. This last month, or last couple of weeks ago, we had Central Texas Dairy Day, kind of a rare opportunity. Think of what we do in dairy. We really haven't done a lot in that, in that space. But what was important was that it gave us an opportunity to be in front of a lot of our ag producers for the area, which is obviously a major economic boon to our region. You also know that we have a partnership with Agriculture Technology Innovation Project. You hear us talk about ATIP and the bioeconomy and so forth. We have been setting up meetings this week with our ag producers and with those folks to talk about solutions that might be available, resources that might be available through the USDA and other entities to help our dairies in ways that are beyond just producing milk. Obviously, there's other ways from green market, our green tax credits that come out of the West Coast and other places, as well as some other commodity opportunities. So we've got that thing still going to try to retain and potentially grow our dairy industry. We had a closing a couple of weeks ago on what we have called Project Jellyfish. It's a little bit not that important as to what that is. It's a $3 million addition that'll happen on West Washington. We are also, should by the end of this year, close two deals that will have about a $2 million addition to our payroll. $1 million each. One is a $45 million expansion of one of our plants, and another one is a $6 million new development that we're also working with the city on, in town, that we'll be releasing very shortly. Washington Commons is obviously something everybody's keeping up with. You now see all the vertical construction, kind of exciting to see that going up. Just wanted to report to the council and to the public that that is on schedule. We should see all of those stores, or the majority of the ones that are already being constructed, open in the first quarter of 2022. So we're just a few months away from that. You can tell already with the vertical, and now with, even with the weather changing, they'll be working primarily on the inside. What typically happens from here is once the construction aspect or piece goes, then the stores are actually turned over to the tenants, at which time they go through and start their process of finishing out the interior, plus the product selection and so forth to finish those out. So we should see that past the holidays, of course, but going into the first quarter of next year. And then lastly, good for you. Well, let me mention one right there. I mentioned the TEDC Conference and the IEDC Conference as well. Those are a couple of state and national opportunities to get together with our colleagues to kind of see what's going on, not only, you know, sort of outside of our breathing space here, and find out where we land in some of these areas. Not just in terms of how we serve our community, but also just in some of the challenges that are out there for the different communities and economic development. What we're finding is that we're still set up to be in a good shape over the next few years. Part of that is the state's commitment to keeping workers employed. That's helping us a little bit, as well as, I think, even for this council, the efforts you guys have made in trying to be pro-business in our community have really helped. So I think Stevenville and New Rath County is set up and continues to be poised for progress over the next five years, which I think is going to be important for us because we're already seeing some of that in the last three, three years. Now we're going to see it continue over the next few years. And a lot of places across the country simply are not finding this to be true in their areas. We think that we're kind of insulated and that every, or that we, we think that this is happening all over the place, rather, and it's simply not. They're having struggles just to survive. And a lot of places are not only losing employees, but they're losing opportunity as well. A lot of things you're also seeing is a lot of places that are going into, or historically have gone into big markets, are choosing to go into smaller markets. This is as a result of both the COVID year, as well as other reasons that they're choosing to go into places like ours. So that gives us an opportunity to start recruiting at a different level than we have been before. We were in a meeting not long ago, and a question came up about a certain national brand, which I won't mention, and if they would ever have interest in a market like Stevenville. And we simply looked at them and said, well, five years ago, many of the stores we're already getting, that you guys are well aware of, would not have considered Stevenville. And so we're kind of shifting into that, that arena. Lastly, and this is somewhat consistent with what we were just saying, our unemployment currently sits at about 4.4 unemployment percentage. That's trending a little over a percentage below the state of Texas, actually, which is higher than the US. US is a little bit under 5, at about 4.8 right now. State of Texas, about 5.6, and we're about 4.4. So we're hanging in there. That typically is considered full employment. As you know, many of our people are looking for employees, and that's something that I think is a challenge for all of us, to try to connect the dots between employees and employers. So we'll be handling, or working on that with a lot of other folks here over the next few months. So that's my report.
I want to say thank you. I give you a hard time, you know that. But I appreciate the work that you and Ashley do. You can see it in town. You can see it all. And the last thing is, every time I mention Ulta, the women call me about that, I take full credit.
Full credit, you take it. You have, you can take credit for all of them, sir. Actually, all of you guys can, because obviously this whole project would not have happened without the hard work that you guys did in making sure that closed.
Any questions for Jeff? Thanks, sir. We'll see you in executive session. Yes. Thank you. Next item is consent agenda. Do you hear a motion?
Do we approve consent agenda as presented?
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council committee meetings for this month is Tuesday, November the 16th. The nominations committee will be meeting on November 30th to discuss nominations for boards and commissions. Our regular council meeting next month is December the 7th. Arts and craft show is the fourth, I'm sorry, the fifth and sixth of November. The farmer's market is November the 6th. I will say that Sarah told me today that that's probably going to be a much smaller market than what we've had the last couple of months, because about half of our vendors are at the arts and craft show. Some of our brother would be inside in cold weather. I don't know. Applications for citizens' boards and commissions are due Friday, November the 19th, by 5:00 PM. We're going to be closed Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th for Thanksgiving. And finally, the Christmasville Parade is Saturday, November the 27th. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comment.
Ryan.
Well, Mr. Barnes took a couple of my comments, but I'm gonna let him have them. I'm just excited that we've got a lot of things going on downtown. And the next two months, there's something down here, if not every weekend, every other weekend. And that's exciting. So I appreciate all the people that are helping with that and that are with the city and on committees around town and advisory boards. It's, it's exciting. So.
Justin.
No comment.
Darren.
No comment.
Ricky.
30 minutes to go vote, if you have it.
30 minutes to vote, good point.
30 minutes to go vote, if you have it. Actually, I gotta cut. Thursday night, this Thursday night is Big Brothers Big Sisters Dancing for the Stars at Lone Star Arena. There are, still are some general admission tickets available for $35. So you can contact the Big Brothers Big Sisters office to purchase those. Also, on Sunday, November 21st, at 6:00 PM, at City Hall at City Limits is the Minister's Alliance Community Thanksgiving Service. So we invite everybody to join the community for that. And, and I'll say again, the Christmasville Parade, November 27th, fireworks and all that good stuff is gonna happen again this year. Hopefully, we don't have rain, but we had 1,500 or 2,000 people last year with rain. So, so everybody come downtown. And, and then finally, the citizen boards and commissions are coming up due. Those applications are due, and I would encourage anyone who has an interest in your city that maybe doesn't want to be an elected official, but, but wants to participate, that's a great way, great place to plug yourself in. So encourage you to apply for those.
Thank you, sir. Carol?
Well, it, it sounds like I'm just repeating things, but, but one of the things that we'll be looking at on November 30th is we'll be interviewing people who want to serve on boards and commissions. And we have, we'll have several openings coming up in boards and commissions with people going off and, and some really, hopefully, good applicants coming in. And we'd like for everyone that wants to volunteer to fill out an application, get it in. November 19th is our deadline. Hope we don't have to push that any. We want to get some good, good people in and have an opportunity to have a voice, direct voice in, in the community and the area that you want to serve in. And it's important. We rely on boards and commissions and whether they're advisory or not, to give advice to this council. You heard some of that today with regard to Christmas decorations, with regard to things going on downtown and, and whatnot. And that all comes from our advisory groups and boards and commissions. So please get those applications in. Christmasville Parade, again, on the 27th, the Ministerial Alliance coming up soon. It is an exciting time in, in Stevenville, Texas. And we've got a great community and, and it's getting better. And it's going to get a lot better in the future. So thank you.
Richard Huckabee.
32 minutes to vote. Now, I'm gonna repeat, a lot of good things coming on in our, in our community, ways to be involved. We're a generous community, a great community, lots of ways. Let us show that. Christmasville Parade last year was freezing cold in the rain. It was amazing. It was good to see the atmosphere. But just another thanks to Officer Randolph and what she's done, and, and the many heroes that we have that work here and work around us, not just when they're on call, but they're there all the time, behind your back and with us. So thanks to her again for what she did.
What we witnessed tonight was, was democracy, and I appreciate everybody's participation here. We wouldn't have this if it weren't for the veterans who gathered lives up, has come up November the 11th. There'll be an event downtown at 11 o'clock, which is remembrance of those great heroes and sacrifices that gave. So remember that. With that, I will, we're going to recess in the executive session, and we'll be back when it's over. and we'll be back when it's over.